of representatives as well as the guests in the gallery to please rise and observe a minute of silence to offer our prayers for the soul of our dearly departed colleague. The House extends its profound condolences to Representative Antonio Tony Pet T Albano of the First District of Isabela, Governor Rodolfo T Albano III of the Province of Isabela, and the rest of the members of the family of the late Lakai Rudy Albano. In honor of Lakai Rudy Albano, the House of Representatives will hold necrological services tomorrow, Thursday, November 7, 2019, at the plenary hall immediately after the Requiem Mass at 9:00 a.m. Please stand for the singing of the National Anthem. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the reference of business.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the reference of business.
House Resolution 492, Resolution Expressing the Profound Condolences of the House of Representatives to the Family of Honorable Rodolfo B Albano Jr., Representative of the LPG Marketers Association, LPGMA Party List in the Eighteenth Congress, introduced by Representatives Alan Peter Compañero Esquetanu, Ferdinand Martin G Romualdes, and Ben Vino M Abante Jr.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the House Bill, House Resolution 492.
The Secretary General will read again the title of the Resolution 492.
House Resolution Number 492, Resolution Expressing the Profound Condolences of the House of Representatives to the Family of Honorable Rodolfo B Albano Jr., Representative of the LPG Marketers Association, LPGMA Party List in the Eighteenth Congress. Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution Number 492.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. House Resolution Number 492 is hereby adopted. The session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the House would have adjourned early today in view of the passing of the Honorable Lakai Rudy Albano. However, knowing our departed colleague, who himself has served as a Majority Leader of this House, he would have wanted us to proceed with our session this afternoon, given the pressing matters that we need to act on. I therefore move that we proceed to the reference of business and request the Secretary General to read the title of the Bills and Resolutions on First Reading, as well as Committee Reports and Communications.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the Bills and Resolutions on First Reading, as well as Committee Reports and Communications.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading. House Bill Number 5194, Establishing a Voter Education Program for Secondary Schools, Representative Noel.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5195, Establishing the Bill of Rights of Taxi Passengers, Representative Noel.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 5196, Providing Direct Financial Assistance to Filipino Rice Farmers, Establishing for the Purpose the Pantawid-Magsasaka Filipino Program, Representative Noel.
Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill Number 5197, Providing Medical Scholarship in the State Universities and Colleges to Qualified Students, Representative Noel.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5198, Providing for the Magna Carta of Out-of-School Youth, Representative Noel.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill Number 5199, Amending RA Number 7160, Otherwise Known as the Local Government Code of 1991, Representative Noel.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5200, Encouraging Good Samaritans Who Provide Reasonable Assistance in an Emergency by Protecting Them from Liability, Representative Noel.
Committee on People’s Participation.
House Bill Number 5201, Instituting Policies for the Protection and Welfare of Caregivers in the Practice of their Profession, Representative Noel.
Committee on Labor Employment.
House Bill Number 5202, Providing for the Bill of Rights of Commuters, Representative Noel.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bills Number 5203 and 5205, Providing for the National Framework of Interns’ Rights and Welfare, Representatives Noel and Vargas.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5204, Providing for the Construction of a Super Health Center in Lying-In Clinic in Parangay Santa Monica, Quezon City, Representative Vargas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Numbers 5206, 5211, and 5212, Establishing Integrated Schools in Quezon City Metro Manila, Representative Vargas.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5207, Requiring All Public Elementary and Secondary Schools to Prepare and Implement a Land Use Development and Infrastructure Plan for the Optimum Utilization of Its Resources in Addressing Basic Education Facility Sortages, Representative Vargas.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5208, Requiring the DOH to Report the Effects of Environmental Factors on Human Health, Representative Vargas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5209, Institutionizing the Youth Legislators Program, Representative Vargas.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill Number 5210, Increasing the Bed Capacity of East Avenue Medical Center from 600 to 1,000 Beds, Representative Vargas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5213, Authorizing the Secretary of Health to Award Grants for Training and Support Services for Alzheimer’s Disease Patients and Their Families, Representative Vargas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5214, Mandating the DOH and the LGUs of the Cities and Municipalities to Provide Digital X- rays and Septum Testing Laboratories in the Local Public Health Centers Nationwide to Maintain Free X- ray and Septum Test Services in the Communities, Representative Vargas.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5215, Requiring All National Regional and Provincial Government Hospitals to Establish, Operate, and Maintain a Dialysis Ward or Unit in Providing Free Dialysis Treatment to Indigent Patients, Representative Rodriguez.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5216, Recognizing the Rights of Natural Ecosystems, Populations, and Processes, and Providing Mechanisms for the Protection and Enforcement thereof, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Ecology.
House Bill Number 5217, Providing Compensation to SK Officials, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill Number 5218, Providing Travel Tax Discount to Senior Citizens and PWDs, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill Number 5219, Creating the West Philippine Sea Authority, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and a Special Committee on the West Philippine Sea.
House Bill Number 5220, Institutionizing the Grant of Lateral Promotion for Honor Graduates Who Choose to Enter the Military and Uniform Service bureaus, agencies of the Government, namely, the AFP, PNP, BJMP, BFP, BuCor, and the PCG after their successful two-year service, and the lateral promotion of all honor graduates who are currently in the uniform service for more than two years to the rank of the tenants or inspectors or its equivalent, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on National Defense and Security and the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill Number 5221, Restructuring, Rationalizing, and Integrating the Government’s Livestock Industry Support Agencies into the Philippine Livestock Authority, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill Number 5222, Providing for the Maritime Code for the Full and Effective Implementation and Enforcement of International Maritime Instruments, of Which the Philippines is a State Party, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 5223, Defining Electronic Violence Against Women and Their Children, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Women and Gender Equality.
House Bill Number 5224, Institutionizing Student Fair Discount, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 5225, Reorganizing the Land Registration Authority, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Government Reorganization and Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5226, Digitizing All Books Necessary for Public Education and Establishing the Philippine Online Library, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5227, Institutionizing a Crime Criminal Investigation System, Representative Rodriguez.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5228, Instituting Values Education in the K-12 Curriculum and Enhancing the Educacion sa Pagpapakatao Program by Incorporating the Teachings of GMRC and Including Character Building Activities, Representative Noel.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5229, Institutionizing a School Modernization and Innovation Program for the Public Elementary and Secondary Schools, Representative Noel.
Meeting Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill Number 5230, Reinforcing User Identification Requirements for the Use of Transportation Network Vehicle Services, Representative Noel.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 5231, Providing for the Later Commencement of Class Rs in Public and Private Educational Institutions in the Philippines, Representative Noel.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture and Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5232, Creating the Dental Unit in Every Rural Health Unit Under the DOH, Representative Noel.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5233, Adjusting the Retirement Age of the Military and Uniform Services Personnel of the Republic of the Philippines According to Rank, Representative Pichai.
Committee on National Defense and Security and the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill Number 5234, Establishing the Livelihood Enhancement Assistance Program, Representative Marco Leto.
Committee on Poverty Alleviation.
House Bill Number 5235, Instituting a Philippine National Autism Care Plan for the Support of Persons with Autism, Representative Roman.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5236, Increasing the Penalties for the Detention of Patients and Cadavers in Hospitals, Medical Clinics, or Any Other Similar Facilities on Grounds of Non-Payment of Hospital Bills or Medical Expenses, Representative Yap Victor.
Meeting Health.
House Bill Number 5237, Placing the Provincial, Subprovincial, and District Jails Under the Jurisdiction of the BJMP, Representative Yap Victor.
Meeting on Justice.
House Bill Number 5238, Requiring Financial Institutions to Post Transaction Fees for Each Automated Teller Machine Transaction, and Restricting Transaction Fees for Automated Teller Machines, Representative Yap Victor.
Committee on Banks and Financial Terminaries.
House Bill Number 5239, Granting Night Shift Differential Pay to Government Employees, Including Those in the GOCCs, Representative Yap Victor.
Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill Number 5240, Protecting the Remittances of Money Transfers of OFWs by Requiring Disclosure of Financial Charges and Other Fees in Connection with Money Transfers, Representative Yap Victor.
Committee on Banks and Financial Terminaries.
House Bill Number 5241, Excluding Thirteenth Month Pay from the Compensation of Taxable Income, Representative Yap Victor.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill Number 5242, Mandating the Institutionization, Development, Training, Organization, and Administration of Basic ROTC in Grades 11 and 12 in Public and Private Educational Institutions, Representative Olivares.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5243, Providing Medical Scholarships to Qualified Students in All Municipalities, Establishing for the Purpose the One-Town-One-Doctor Scholarship Program, Representative Olivares.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill Number 5244, Declaring January 22 of Every Year as a Special Working Holiday to be Known as National Farmers’ Day, Representative Collyamat, Zarate, Gaite, and Brosas.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill Number 5245, Prohibiting the Distribution, Sale, and Use of Paraket in the Philippines, Representative Collyamat, Zarate, Gaite, and Brosas.
Committee on Ecology.
House Bill Number 5246, Prohibiting the Distribution, Sale, and Use of Dysphosphate in the Philippines, Representative Collyamat, Zarate, Gaite, and Brosas.
Committee on Ecology.
House Bill Number 5247, Repealing PD Number 1620, Otherwise Known as Granting to the International Rice Research Institute the Status, Prerogative Privileges, and Immunities of an International Organization, Representative Collyamat, Zarate, Gaite, and Brosas.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill Number 5248, Prohibiting Hazing and Regulating Other Forms of Initiation Rights of Fraternities, Sororities, and Other Organizations, Representative Nocrales Juan.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 5249, Granting 50% Discounts for Funeral Services to Indigent Families and Granting Free Funeral Services to Extremely Poor Families Nationwide, Representative Zarate.
Committee on Poverty Alleviation.
House Bill Number 5250, Institutionizing the Community-Driven Development Approach as a National Strategy for Inclusive Growth and Social Protection, Representative Lemcaichong.
Committee on Social Services.
House Bill Number 5251, Amending RA Number 9645, Otherwise Known as the Commemoration of the Founding Anniversary of the Iglesia Ni Cristo Act, Representative Kimbo.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill Number 5252, Prohibiting the Dissemination of False Information on the Presence of Bombs, Explosives, and Other Incendiary Devices in High-Density or Sensitive Places, Representative Kimbo.
Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill Number 5253, Establishing the Fiscal Regime of Revenue Sharing Arrangement for Large-Scale Metallic Mining, Representative Kimbo.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill Number 5254, Amending Section 9 of RA Number 10366, Otherwise Known as the Act Authorizing the Commission on Elections to Establish Presigs or Sign to Accessible Polling Places Exclusively for PWDs and Senior Citizens, Representative Kimbo.
Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill Number 5255, Instituting a National Land Use and Management Policy, Representative Kimbo.
Special Committee on Land Use.
House Bill Number 5256, Grading the POVA into a Department of Overseas Filipinos, Representative Mendoza.
Committee on Government Reorganization and Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill Number 5257, Providing for the Establishment of the National Forensic DNA Database, Representative Cabo Chan.
Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill Number 5258, Expanding the Coverage of Compulsory Insurance of OFWs, Representative Pineda.
Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill Number 5259, Establishing in Every Two to Three Contiguous Barangays a Permanent Evacuation Center, Representative Zarate.
Committee on Disaster Management.
House Bill Number 5260 and 5261, Establishing Philippine Heart Centers and a National Kidney and Transplant Institute in Bohol for Visayas and Davao City for Mindanao, Representative Umentado.
Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 5262 and 5266, Declaring Eco-Tourism Zones and Tourist Destinations in Certain Municipalities in the Provinces of Laguna, Representative Aragonés.
Committee on Tourism.
House Bill Number 5267, Taxing Taxpayers Engaged in Philippine Offshore Gaming Operations, Representative Salceda.
Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill Number 5268, Recognizing Dashcam Videos, CCTV Videos, and Other Video Footages from Citizens to Be Admissible as Electronic Evidence Provided There in Premipase Proof of Traffic Violation, Representative Herrera D.
Committee on Transportation.
Resolutions, House Resolution 457, Expressing the High Esteem of the House and Congratulatory Message to the Newly Awarded Filipino National Scientist, Dr. Emil Q Javier, for his Distinguished Achievement in Science and Technology conferred by President Rodrigo Duterte, Representative Ko Elisa.
Committee on Science and Technology.
House Resolution 476, Urging the Communities of Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples in Basic Education and Culture to Condemn and Investigate the Closure Order of 55 Lumad Schools of the Salunggopang-Tangkok-Kanogon Community Learning Center Issued by the DEEPED Region 11, Representative Collyamat, Zarate, Gaite, Castrofranz, Brosas, and Ilago.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 477, Urging Strongly the Proper Documentation and Protection of All Gaming Industry Employees Nationwide by Rationalizing the Issuance of Gaming Employment Licenses by the PAGCor, Representative Ongroni and Yap Eric.
Committee on Games and Amusements.
House Resolution 478, Congratulating and Commending Carlo Yulo for Winning the Gold Medal in the 49th FIG World Artistic Championship in Stuttgart, Germany, Representative Bautista.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 479, Congratulating and Commending Nesty Patteksio for Winning the Gold Medal in the Featherweight Division in the 2019 AIBA Women’s World Boxing Championship in Russia, Representative Bautista.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 480, 487, and 490, Expressing the Profound Sympathy and Condolences of the House to the Brave Family of Former Senate President Aquilino Nene Pimentel Jr., Representative Tambodin Rodriguez, Esquetanu Alan Peter, Romualdes Ferdinand, and Abante.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 481, Urging the House to Call for an Inquiry into the Profilification of Unregulated Carrier Operators, Representative Atchenza.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 482, Congratulating Philippine-American Chess Grandmaster Wesley Saw for Winning the inaugural FIDE World Future Random Chess Championship in Norway, Representative Atchenza.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 483, Urging the House to the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization to Investigate the Proposed Joint Venture Agreement between Bacolod City Water District and the Prime Water Infrastructure Corporation and Its Impact on the Provision of Water Services and Security of Tenures of the Employee of the Water District, Representative Gaite, Zarate, and Collyamat.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 484, Urging Executive Department to Provide Financial Assistance to the Family Severely Affected by the Series of Earthquakes in Mindanao for Their Immediate Needs, Representative Hataman, Sangkopan, and Belmonte.
Committee on Disaster Management.
House Resolution 485, Expressing Warm Felicitations and Birthday Greetings of the House to the Executive Minister of the Iglesia Ni Cristo Brother Eduardo V Manalo, Representative Olivares.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 486, Urging the House Committees on Justice and Human Rights to Jointly Investigate the Plight of Persons Deprived of Liberty Within the New Belibid Prison, Representative Belmonte.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 488, Directing the House Committee on Human Rights to Investigate on the Mass Arrest of Leaders of the Progressive Organizations and Activists in the Negroes Island by Combined Elements of the Police and Military, as Well as the Reported Planting of Firearms, Explosives, and Other Devices, Representative Zarate, Gaite, Collyamat, Castrofranz, Brosas, and Ilago.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 489, Urging the House to Investigate the Holistic Impact of the San Miguel Corporation’s 2,500-Hector Bulakan-Aeronopolis Project, including the 1,168-hectare new Manila International Airport to be Constructed at Parangay Taliptip in Bulakan Town, Bulakan Province, Representative Collyamat, Zarate, Gaite, Castrofranz, Brosas, and Ilago.
Committee on Rules.
Message from the Senate, Message Dated November 4, 2019, Informing the House that the Senate on Even Date Passed Senate Joint Resolution Number 8.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
Communications, 2018 Annual Report, Team Prime for Change Granted in Our Vision of the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation.
Committee on Health.
Letter Dated August 22, 2019, Samuel Martires, Ombudsman, Office of the Ombudsman, Submitting their Annual Report for Calendar Year 2018.
Committee on Justice.
Letter Dated September 26, 2019, of Cyril Jelpa, MD, Municipal Mayor, Malaves Ambongga del Sur, Submitting to the House the Report on Fund Utilization and Status of Program Project Implementation for the Month of October 2017, to January 31, 2018, First Quarter 2018, Second Quarter 2018, and for the Quarter Ended September 30, 2019, on the LGSF.
Committee on Appropriations.
Letter Dated October 1, 2019, of Maria Catalina Cabral, PhD, Ceso One, Under-Secretary of the Planning and the PPP Office of the Secretary, DPWH, Submitting their Project Briefers, Including the List of Priority Projects of PPP of the DPWH and the Tall Regulatory Board.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Email Dated October 3, 2019, from the NEA, Submitting their Fund Utilization Report as of September 20, 2019.
Committee on Appropriations.
Letter Dated 9 October 2019, Secretary Adelina Cito, Presidential Advisor on Legislative Affairs, Head PLOLO, Submitting Details of Appropriation Obligations and Disbursements of the PLOLO for the Quarter Ending September 30, 2019.
Committee on Appropriations.
Letter Dated October 14, 2019, General Ricardo Visaya, Administrator Nia, Submitting their Calendar Year 2019 Third Quarter Progress Report of the Nia CARPIC for the Misad Irrigation Component Projects. of the NIA CARPIC for the Misad Irrigation Component Projects.
Committee on Agriculture and Food.
Email dated October 15, 2019 from the PPDO Cibugay submitting the scanned fiscal financial report of the CMGP of Road Repair Rehabilitation and Improvement for the quarter ending September 19 attested by Attorney Wilter Yap Palma, Provincial Governor.
Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated October 15, 2019 of USEC Ricardo David, Under Secretary for Defense, Policy, DND, OIC, National Defense College of the Philippines, submitting their AAPSI of Audit Observations and Recommendation for Calendar Year 2018.
Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated October 16, 2019 of Wendell Abisado, Acting Secretary, DBM, submitting the status of the financial year 2019 budget as of September 30, 2019.
Committee on Appropriations.
Additional Reference of Business Resolutions. House Resolution 491 Resolution expressing our sincerest congratulations to Brother Eduardo V. Manalo for his triumphant first decade of church administration as he marks his tenth anniversary as Executive Minister of the Iglesias de Cristo on September 7, 2019. Representative Nieto.
Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 493 A Resolution commending the Jesus is Lord Church worldwide on its forty-first founding anniversary. Representative Kayatano Alan Peter, Romualdes Ferdinand, and Abante.
Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 73 on House Bill Number 59. Representative Katsalyan.
Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of the honorable members. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Chair is none. The Secretary General will call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abante, Abaya, Belianoso, Abu, Abu Exaldivar, Abunda, Akop, Costa, Costa Alba, Jong, Pinkula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Senaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amantematba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Agones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atchenza, Umentado, Babasa, Bagatzing, Balindong, Vanyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Berzaga, Vasco, Bautista, Bautista Bendigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Piazon, Biliones, Pirón, Bolilia, Bondok, Gordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Cabot Chan, Cabredo, Kagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Karis, Castelo, Castrofrans, Castrofredinil, Kayatano Alan Peter Campañero, Kayatano Mariala Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Chungalao, Coangelica, Coelizalvi, Coangco, Kolyantes, Crisologo, Kuah, Coaresma, Cueva, Kulyamat, Tagoo, Galipe, Dalog, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, D Faustino Ino, D Faustino Michael III, D Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleio, Ilago, Enverga, Erishe, Eregel, Armita Buahing, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferr Juliet, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fong Wan, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuente Bella, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vince, Grinch Janet, Grinch Sharon, Gassetaya, Gatsalyan, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Gorseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera D., Hofer, Alusos, Javier, Jimenez, Co Elisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Diatson, Ligarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Lusotan, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawa, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles, Jericho, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Juaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Oroni, Ortega, Uwana Dixon, Pakia Alberto, Pakia Rojello, Padgiernos, Padwalno, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Rimulia, Rivilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaría, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Recto, Sarmento Saulub, Savillano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrilita, Swansing Horasyo, Suarez, Aleta, Suarez, David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Chemir, Tan Shari, Tan Tambut, Tehada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino Torres, Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, T., Umali Alfonso, Umali Maya Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco Veloso Vergara, Billa, Billa Fuerte, Bilyanueva, Brother Eddie, Bilyanueva Noel, Biliar, Biliaras Suarez, Bilyarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamoronaldo, Zamoraway Corat, Zarate, Zubir. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that one hundred eighty-three members responded to the call.
With one hundred eighty-three members responding to a call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 21 dated November 4, 2019. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Seeing objection? Chair is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, before we begin, may I greet our guests who are in the gallery? They are from the delegation from the Parliamentary Institute of Cambodia. And I would like to apologize if I mispronounce your name. They are in the gallery and I request the delegation to please stand up. They are Cameron Scott Donald, Lee Yasak, Chur Srinieth, Sam Orin Mardi, Cheya Saria, Sen Chanti, Mam Chenda, Sin Sofiara, Wong Chandias, May Dara, Myth Chanti, Shornham, Tim Bantheon, Viata Wong, Viata Nak.
The Chair acknowledges the delegation of the Parliamentary Institute of Cambodia. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, also would like to greet the guest of the Honorable Eric Yap. They are the Barangay captains of Zone Fifteen and Zone Sixteen, all of the, in the First District of Caloacan City. The Honorable Atto Oliva, Honorable Sonon Mayor, Honorable Inar Trinidad, as well as the Barangay Councilors of Zone Fifteen and Sixteen of the First District of Caloacan City.
Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to greet also the guest of the Honorable Christian Unavia, Mr. Alexis Abule of La Libertad Negroes Oriental. And he is the champion of the recently-held International Federation of Bodybuilding Grand Prix in 2019, held in Bali, Indonesia, last October 26, 2019.
Mr. Abule, would please rise. Congratulations. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Bohol and Mr. Ruben Boybating of Gin Dulman, Bohol.
Please rise. Thank you for your visit and welcome to the House of Representatives.
So in pointing out that the only public utilities to be protected, for people to be protected, would be, again, I point out electricity, water, and sovage.
Na pwede na sila, mahal.
Oo, karoon lang, napili. Election karoon, oo, karoon, oo. Sa Visayas, ah, sa Cebu or Visayas ba? Ah, Visayan or Visayas?
Session is resumed, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. Number one, House Bill Number 76, establishing the rules and policies on the domestic administrative adoption of Filipinos from the Committee on Population and Family Relations to the Committee on Welfare of Children. Number two, House Bill Number 984, granting tax incentive to medical doctors who render free professional services to indigent patients from the Committee on Health to the Committee on Ways and Means. Number three, House Bill Number 1567, providing for a comprehensive nursing law towards quality healthcare system from the Committee on Health to the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation. Number four, House Bill Number 1621, creating a body corporate to be known as the Western Philippine Medical Center from the Committee on Health to the Committees on Government Enterprises and Privatization and Health. Number five, House Bill Number 1676, establishing the Philippine Blood Disease and Transfusion Center from the Committee on Health to the Committees on Government Regulation and Health. Number six, House Bill Number 4829, providing 20% discount for poor job applicants in the payment of fees and charges for certain certificates and clearances issued by government agencies from the Committee on Labor and Employment to the Committees on Poverty Elevation. Number seven, House Bill Numbers 1788, 3642, 3712, and 4543, reinstating the mandatory reserve officers training corps for all tertiary level students from the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and National Defense and Security to the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education. Number eight, House Bills, House Bill Numbers 4309 and 4702, creating the Department of Technical Education and Skills Development from the Committee on Higher and Technical Education to the Committees on Government Organization and Higher and Technical Education. And lastly, number nine, House Bill Number 2475, providing for additional support and compensation for educators in basic education from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to the Committee on Appropriations. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There no objection? Chair is none, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider, Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the measure is that we are in the period of interpolation, and with that, I move that we recognize, move that we recognize the Honorable Jesus Crispin Remulia of the Seventh District of Cabivita for his interpolation. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Senior Deputy Majority Leader is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the lady sponsor yield a few questions?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, in the table for discussion is House Bill 78, entitled "An Act Providing for the Definition of Public Utility," further amending for the purpose Commonwealth Act Number 146, otherwise known as the Public Service Act as amended. What is the reason behind the measure, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, um, the current proposal is to amend the 80-plus-year-old law on Public Service Act, to which, uh, refers to public services, and in relation to the Constitution, the Constitution provides, uh, limitation on public utilities as to equity.
So how old is this law? What year was this law passed?
1936.
Commonwealth Act 146?
I think 1936, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Speaker.
19?
36. I have to re-
1936?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And it has withstood the test of time until the attempt to redefine the law today?
But, Mr. Speaker, the, the original bill back in 1936 has, has undergone many changes in which some were, because the law lists a number of industries that are included as public services. It has included, added, and also excluded some over the time, over the years. Uh, as I say, they, they have, the original was, if, with your indulgence, any steam railroad, street railway, traction railway, canal, express, subway, pipeline, gas, electricity, heat-
Can we speak slower? Can we spell it out one by one?
Yes.
As defined in Commonwealth Act 146? One by one, please. The original provision-
1936, ano?
Yes.
146. Okay, 146. Own, operate, manage, or control in the Philippines for hire or compensation any common carrier-
Common carrier, then?
Yes.
Under common carrier, what were the other?
It's just common carrier, then, then after that, uh, the list goes on railroad, street railway, traction railway, subway, freight, and/or passenger motor vehicles with or without fixed route freight or other car service, express service, steamboat or steamship line, ferries, water, small watercraft such as lighters, lighters, pontines, pontins, lorches, and others engaged in the transportation of passengers or cargo, shipyard, marine railway, marine repair shop, public warehouse, wharf, or dock, not under the jurisdiction of the insular collector of customs, ice, refrigeration, canal, irrigation, pipeline, gas, electric heat, light heat, power, water, oil, sewer, telephone, wire, or wireless telegraph system, plant, or equipment, and broadcasting stations when owned, operated, managed, or controlled for public use or service within the Philippines. This is the original, back in 19-
Yes, um, originally, they defined modes of transportation, warehousing, electricity-
Yes.
Uh, was telecommunications in the list already or not?
Uh, you can, I, I, Mr. Speaker, I can, I think you can qualify in some ways because there was telephone, wire, or wireless telegraph, uh, broadcasting stations.
In other words-
It existed back then, but, but what existed then as telecommunications we have now, I think it was included, yes.
So in other words, the law defining public utility spelled out the conveniences of life that people enjoyed as public citizens, or citizens of the Republic, and that they had legal protection when the government controlled the functions that are spelled out in the Public Service Act. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker.
And today, we are deliberating a bill which just defines a public utility and says that these are, for the purposes of this law, distribution of electricity, transmission of electricity, water pipeline distribution system, or sovage?
Yes.
That's it?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And it excludes, in other words, it excludes telecommunications, transportation, subways, railways, it excludes every other function that is supposed to be a matter of public service or a public utility?
Um, it excludes it, uh, does, the list stays, uh, because these are public services. The amendment, the effect of the amendment is differentiate what is a public utility and what is-
Yes.
But, but all public ser-, uh, all public utilities are public services still.
But, uh, is the, the lady being lawyer, the lady legislator being a lawyer, the sponsor, is very much aware that the law, what the law does not include, it excludes? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So in pointing out that the only public utilities to be protected, for people to be protected, would be, again, I point out, electricity, water, and sovage, in simple words, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, these are the, I, I would like to qualify my answer in a sense that all, all the industries that are listed, whether public utility or public services, are still protected in a sense that it is a service to all the general public. All the administrative agencies, as well as any regulations that apply, will still apply, whether, uh, extraordinary diligence for a common carrier, it will still apply.
But in effect-
The only difference, I'm sorry, the only difference why, uh, when you, when you distinguish electricity and water as a, as a public utility themselves, is you, you act, the, the main effect is, is, uh, uh, the limitation, on the equity limitation, will only apply to electricity and water and not to the rest, but the, but the obligations-
In effect, the Constitution's definition of public utility, which includes all of those defined in the Public Service Act, is now being amended indirectly. Am I not correct, Madam, Madam Sponsor? We are amending indirectly what has otherwise, what has otherwise been defined in the Philippine Constitution as public utilities, or not, not defined by the Constitution, but covered by the Constitution as public utilities?
Mr. Speaker, Public Service Act was enacted back, way back before the 1986 Constitution, but when the 1986 Constitution was, uh, enacted, it was, uh, it referred to public utility, and while Public Service Act actually referred to public service, the problem, which, uh, we have seen over the years, is the interchanging of the terminology. Sometimes the, the jurisprudence would refer to the Public Service Act listing it, but then also sometimes jurisprudence would actually exclude some of the industries that have been included in the Public Service Act. It, the, there is inconsistencies in some, in some, in some jurisprudence, but yes, the generally accepted practice was to refer to the Public Service Act when you applied the 64 limitation of the Constitution.
Well, a public utility company, um, as defined in our very present Wikipedia, is an organization that maintains infrastructure for a public service, or often also providing a service using that infrastructure. Is that an accurate description still of a public service or a public utility?
We, uh, we have, uh, collated or, or, or referred to many of the, uh, definitions, and, um, we based it in American jurisprudence, as well as any legal references, whether international or, or, uh, Filipino references, as well as jurisprudence from the Supreme Court and the deliberations of the Concomit in 1986 Constitution. Uh, the result, uh, Mr. Speaker, is the criteria that we have set forth-
Why, why is it then, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker, that it is very clear that the definition means to exclude telecommunications, telephony, data, highways, transportation, and those necessities of life which make life convenient for every citizen of this country? Why are we excluding these matters which control our lives where the people deserve protection from the government? Why are we excluding those areas of life?
Mr. Speaker, by excluding telecommunications from the definition of public utility, it does not, uh, necessarily imply that any regulations that are in place for the protection of the consumers will not be applicable anymore. In fact, they are even reinforced by the, some more amendments of the Public Service Act in terms of penalties and procedural, uh, changes that we have, uh, included in the amended, uh, amendment as introduced by this bill. Um, why is it exclude, uh, so, so any regulations by the NTC or any other adminis-, uh, administrative agency will still apply. Any limitations on the employment or, uh, privacy, that will still apply. Uh, but yes, by definition, it will be excluded as, uh, public utility, hence it will be open for foreign investments. Uh, it will not be subject to the 640. Why has it been included? Because we have collated what, we have tried to be as thorough in the definition of what is public utility, because we want to be consistent on the definition, on know-how to define public utility, not on the list of industries that are public utilities, because that changes over time. Depends on the year, or the decade, or the century, a public utility may not be a public utility in the future. So, we have, uh, we have a set of criteria that will eventually guide Congress or the legislature into which, how, how they will qualify a certain industry, whether it's public utility or not, and-
Well, uh, let me ask you a question-
Yes, sir.
About a public utility in our everyday life. Data, internet, data, internet, is that a public utility?
No, Mr. Speaker.
It is not? You mean it is not necessary for the, for the well-being of people when they do research on an everyday life? It is nothing that you wish to be a public utility as you define the bill you present before us in this house?
Mr. Speaker, I believe that it's a public service, but not a public utility.
Well, public service and public utility are interchangeable, are they not, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
For the purposes of this, uh, proposed amendment to the PSA, Mr. Speaker, the two concepts are different, Mr. Speaker.
So the concept of telecommunications, where before it was so, the Supreme Court ruled upon this matter so often that these are public utilities, by your very measure that you're proposing, it is now not within the ambit of the Constitution when we mention telecommunications, or telephony, or data. That is the attempt of this sponsor to change the, the way that we view these things, is it not?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that, that basically changes the whole concept of public-
By defining it by words in a bill you are presenting to this body, you are saying that these are not utilities anymore because we did not define them as such?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So when we say that, uh, a public utility bus, or a public utility vehicle, is no longer a public utility because it is not included in the definition of the law or the proposed bill?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, and that will be up to Congress whether to include it- Yes, Mr. Speaker, and that will be up to Congress whether to include it in the future or not, Mr. Speaker.
And it also leads us to the conclusion that with this bill, we are now legitimizing whatever transgressions there were of the anti-dummy law with regards to telecommunications and the ownership of two big telecommunications companies in this country. We are legitimizing them by ratifying their acts, by not including them in the definition of a public utility.
Mr. Speaker, the situation of the telecommunications, whether they are owned by Filipinos or not currently, is, has, was not a consideration on how to define a public utility? That is a circumstance of how the business is being...
Then why do not we include telecommunications, telephony, data in the definition of public utility? Why exclude them? Why?
Because they are, they do not fall under the four criteria that we have set, Mr. Speaker. So they are not public utilities, they will still be public services, but they are, uh, not public...
So it is your belief, Madam Sponsor, that by changing the criteria by which we judge these public utilities, they cease to become public utilities even in the real lives of real people, not corporations, Madam Speaker? Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
We are changing, the basic effect of changing it to a public, not qualifying it as a public utility, is that it will be open to foreign investments, but other than that...
Are they not open to foreign investment? Why are they not open?
They are open, they are, I'm sorry. It will be open for foreign, in fact, the operation can be 100% fine.
And is there any limitation as to their being open for foreign investment?
With the proposal.
No, without the proposal?
Without the proposal, no.
Limitation right now?
They are subject to the limitation.
What are the limitations, Madam Sponsor, Mr. Speaker?
The 640 limitation, Mr. Speaker, based on the Constitution.
Where is the 640 limitation found? In the Philippine Constitution?
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker.
So this is an attempt to redefine the Constitution, is it not?
No, Mr. Speaker, because the definition of public utility is still consistent with how they have defined it in different jurisprudence as well as the Supreme Court. We are consistent on that and that we have incorporated it in the law, what we have deemed to be rightfully the proper definition, so that there is no confusion as to how the courts would interpret it. It is to clarify what is a public utility.
So it's really an attempt to open up the economy to foreign investment in fields that are otherwise prohibited under the current setup?
Mr. Speaker, the intention of the amendment is to define, but yes, that will be one of the major effects of the amendment.
So what we are saying here is that this protectionist constitution, if we cannot amend it, if we cannot change it, we will go around it. That is basically what we're saying here in this august chamber.
Mr. Speaker, the purpose of the amendment is to clarify what is a public utility and also to, if the, also to make sure that we are, we have a definite definition of what is a public utility. Now, the effect, yes, the effect will open the industries to foreign investments, especially transportation and telecommunications. However, Mr. Speaker, I do not believe that the intention of the proponents of this bill or the authors of this bill is to... I think that the purpose of the proponents of this bill is to protect the interests of the Filipino people. Should there be foreign investors in telecommunications, maybe the intention is welcome because it will improve the services in telecommunications, the same as in transportation, with the long lines for LRT and MRT with foreign investors. This hopefully would add more capital to the Philippines and help the daily services that are needed by Filipinos here for transportation, telecommunications. And yes, yes, that will basically open many industries to foreign investors, Mr. Speaker.
In other words, this sponsor, Mr. Speaker, is asking 300 congressmen to turn their backs on the definition of a public utility under the Constitution so that we can give way to several corporate interests in this country. Is this the way the sponsor wants this matter to be defined?
Mr. Speaker, the Constitution, the 1986 Constitution does not define what is public utility. The reference as to how to define a public utility has been interchanged. In fact, there are different versions on how the Supreme Court has defined public utility where we have Public Service Act. It is not a public utility act, it's Public Service Act. In some cases, they have used the Public Service Act for reference for public utility while deriving, interpreting the Constitution, but sometimes they have not. So it is, it has been, the list has not been consistent. In fact, like ice storage and stevedoring has been ruled by Supreme Court as not public utilities or public services. And also power generation, which used to be part of public services, has now been excluded by Congress itself. So what we are trying to do here is have a proper guideline to interpret the Constitution. It is not that we are giving a new definition, but we are giving the proper, the clear interpretation of what is a public utility, Mr. Speaker. This is not to give a new or a different meaning of public utility as defined by the Constitution because basically the Constitution does not define public utility.
So you mentioned an act of Congress, specifically, if I may call it its formal name, Electric Power Industry Reform Act.
EPIRA.
Which redefined power generation as not a public utility, am I correct?
Yes, the EPIRA law...
And the EPIRA law, when it was being passed, promised all consumers that electricity prices will go down everywhere for everybody. Was it not the promise of EPIRA?
I think so, Mr. Speaker.
And I'm sure that the sponsor is aware that that has not, that promise was never fulfilled. The sponsor is aware of that, would you agree?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And in the same light, again, we are promising our people that there will be a better life because we are opening up the economy to foreigners who have the best interest of the Filipino in hand. Is that the way you want us to believe? That foreigners will be loving the Filipino more than the Filipino?
No, Mr. Speaker, we are opening it up not because we prefer foreign investors, but with the growth of our economy, which is, and the growth of our population is quite fast, and seeing how the situation is with our transportation industry as well as telecommunications, transportation whether it be land, sea, or air, is not at par yet to what are the Filipinos need. So the intention is not to give preference to foreign investors, it is to...
Open up the economy to foreign investors.
Open up the economy for the foreign investors to help our local investors.
So when we open up the economy for foreign investment by changing the law, we are not favoring foreign interest?
No, Mr. Speaker.
We are not favoring them at all?
No, Mr. Speaker.
We are favoring who then? By opening it to them?
We are favoring the Filipino people in having, giving them the opportunity for better services at lower cost, Mr. Speaker.
Isn't that an absurd conclusion that you are trying to make us believe? That opening up the economy to foreigners will not benefit foreigners?
Mr. Speaker, it will benefit foreigners, but it does not mean that we are preferring foreigners. We welcome them if they could help our industries, if they can help the services here, but should the administrative agencies rule that they are not, they cannot deliver what is expected of them, then the administrative agencies still have the power and control over these foreign investors that are interested in the industries that they are administering? Like for example, when, if we open up foreign investors in air transport, we have CAP and CAAP that will still regulate that, with NTC for telecommunications and any other agencies are still in place. How it is now, it will still be the same.
But there will be no more constitutional issue? That is the matter that we are trying to do away with, is to do away with the constitutional issue. The mantle of protection offered by the supreme law of the land is now being set aside by redefining public utilities in this proposed House Bill?
It simply gives them, Mr. Speaker, allows them to invest, but again, I would like to insist that this is not giving them preference, Mr. Speaker.
So this is not an attempt to subterfuge or to go around the provisions of the Constitution, the 1987 Constitution?
No, Mr. Speaker.
There is no need for us to go around the Constitution?
No, Mr. Speaker.
Then we do not need this law? If there is no need to go around the Constitution, then we do not need this proposed law?
Mr. Speaker, the Constitution does not, we don't need to go around the Constitution. What the Constitution needs is a clearer definition of public utility because it has, the list has changed over the years and it is, the list, they add or they remove some industries so that we, the courts can be properly guided and Congress can be properly guided. We made a clearer definition of public utility.
Is the good sponsor aware of the term certificate of public convenience and necessity?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Where is it found?
It is found previous, well, it is found in the Commonwealth...
In the Public Service Act, is it not?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And the certificate of public convenience and necessity defines the need of the public for a service, for the public to have the convenience of that service, is it not? Isn't it more of having the public avail of a service that is necessary for their well-being?
I do not have, excuse me, I do not have the specific definition, but I believe so, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Would it not be the purpose of the certificate of public convenience and necessity?
Mr. Speaker, the certificate of public convenience and necessity, basically, it has been replaced by any other authority or franchise that is given. In the current administrative agencies, we have replaced the certificate of public convenience with franchises or authority to operate, Mr. Speaker, so basically, yes.
So that is the reason behind a CPCN being granted by the Public Service Commission? Or what is the agency now? The LTFRB? Are we not speaking about the LTFRB when it comes to bus lines, to transportation lines around the country? Land Transportation Regulatory Board?
Yeah, the LTFRB.
And Franchising Board?
That, they are the ones that issues the franchises for...
Yes, based on the CPCN.
Yes.
That's the origin. So when we have this given to a public utility vehicle, we now will not call it a public utility vehicle anymore because the proposed bill does not recognize transportation as a public utility. We no longer call it a public utility vehicle.
The how it is termed, it will depend on LTFRB, Mr. Speaker.
So in other words, we go to the absurd situation, absurd, because we are denying what is in front of us to be true?
Mr. Speaker, how we define public utility is the same as how it has been defined by the Supreme Court as well as during the Constitutional Commission. What changes is the onset of technological innovation or globalization. This changes the nature of the different industries. So for example, the ice cold storage, which was then considered as a public utility because it was important, I think, in power generation as well during its time. It now, it is not anymore a public utility, but still, yes, it should, there should be public interest and it should be, the service should be for the general public. It still stays, Mr. Speaker, but what we have done now, what we have done now is clarify in the law how to define a public utility so that the courts and all the administrative agencies can be properly guided. We do not, we are not attempting here to change any regulation that applies to all these public services that we have now, like transportation, telecommunications, water, and electricity. The attempt is not to redefine the definition of the Constitution. It is to clarify actually, sir, because this, Mr. Speaker, because it is the role of the legislative and Congress to...
Why don't we just change the Constitution then? Why not propose a constitutional amendment which takes away public utility so there will be no more issue, there will be no more debate? Isn't that the better alternative? For the purpose of the bill is really to circumvent the provisions of the Constitution. As honest legislators, it's better for us just to amend the Constitution or call ourselves dishonest?
Mr. Speaker, should the good interpreter deem that more appropriate than we can consider the...
I believe that that is the better course of action for anybody who wants to propose any new definition for public utility is to amend the Constitution so what it seeks to avoid will be tackled head-on and not circumventing it by coming up with a bill which tries to define something which we know is not true.
Mr. Speaker, how we define public utility in the proposed amendment is based on jurisprudence as well as all legal references, whether in the country...
So has the court ever declared telephony as non-public utility or not? Has the Supreme Court ever come up with a decision where it stood to say the use of a telephone system or telephony itself is not a public...
Mr. Speaker...
Utility is not a public necessity. Communications is not a public necessity. Transportation is not a public utility. Do we have decisions to that regard?
Mr. Speaker, the decisions of the Supreme Court on the definition...
Only covers ice plants?
No, Mr. Speaker...
And probably some marine action, but no more than that?
Stevedoring.
Stevedoring, but no more than that?
Mr. Speaker, the list as stated by the Supreme Court in different, the list of industries that has been enumerated by the Supreme Court varies over the years.
But it did not include telephony, it did not include data, it did not internet, it did not include transportation as among those which are not anymore public utilities?
Mr. Speaker, what we are doing is not make a list, but rather to be more prudent is make a definition. A definition that is based on the decisions of the Supreme Court and the deliberations in the Constitutional Commission. The list can change over time, but it is more prudent to make a clearer definition. The nature of an industry...
Is transportation still a public utility, is it not?
Mr. Speaker, the nature of transportation does not change over the years.
As a public utility?
As a, apologies, Mr. Speaker, but the nature of the industry does change. Before, there was only one airport industry player. Now we have three or four, same as telecommunications. There was only one for decades and decades, there was only PLDT if I'm not mistaken. Now we have more. So their activity does not change, but the nature of the industry, the circumstances of the industry changes and hence it disqualifies them from becoming a public utility.
In other words, what we are saying here is that the public does not deserve to be protected from corporations that do business in this country. Corporations, especially foreign... Corporations, especially foreign corporations, may come in to the telephony sector, data. They may come into transportation, they may come into any sector. And the, and our laws do not have to protect the Filipino anymore. That is now the statement we are making by trying to pass this measure in this House.
Mr. Speaker, it is, I, I would not equate opening or allowing foreign investors to removing protection of the Filipinos. I, I don't understand the logic because it is, we still protect the Filipinos. We are still in Philippine land and under the Philippine.
Is the sponsor aware of the, of the Anti-Dami Act?
I'm sorry, Mr. Speaker, but, but all these industries, whether they are foreign investors or domestic investors, they are still under the regulation of the administrative agencies that regulate such industries. That does not, we do not do away with authority of LTFRB.
So we still protect the Filipino from foreigners? How about the Anti-Dami law? Is the sponsor aware of the Anti-Dami law?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
How does the Anti-Dami law operate? Let them sponsor.
Let me just get the specific, uh. One, one, one second, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session is suspended.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we continue, and with the indulgence of our sponsor interpreter, may I first greet the guest of the honorable Speaker, the Speaker Alan Peter Companiero Caetano and Congresswoman Lani Caetano, the Teachers' Dignity Coalition, Mayor Lino Caetano, and the City Officials of Taguig.
Please rise to be acknowledged. Thank you for your visit. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move down that the interpretation, continue the, with the interpretation, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The sponsor will please proceed.
Uh, I'll, I'll just read the provision. Any person, any person, corporation, or association which having in its name or under its control a right, franchise, privilege, property, or business, the exercise or enjoyment of which is expressly deserved by the.
Expressly deserved.
By the Constitution or the laws to the citizens of the Philippines or of any other specific country or to corporations or associations at a sixty percentum of the capital of which is owned by citizens, permits or allows the use, exploitation, or enjoyment thereof by a person, corporation, or association not, not possessing the requisites prescribed by the Constitution or the laws of the Philippines. That, that's the abbreviated version, Mr. Speaker.
So in that law, it, it punishes anybody. The Anti-Dami law, uh, punishes those who do not respect the reservation made for activities that are supposed to be reserved for Filipino citizens.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Whether, I guess, whether directly or indirectly, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, so there are activities that are expressly reserved for Filipino citizens.
Yes.
And anybody who violates that is punished by, what does the law say about the punishment? A fine and imprisonment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I do not have the figures here, but yes. There is a corresponding punishment.
So that law has stood the test of time and it is the one constantly being disregarded by many people who do business in this country.
Mr. Speaker, uh, the, uh, just to address the question earlier, it shall be pun- punished by imprisonment for not less than five nor more than fifteen years and by a fine of not less than the value of the right franchise or privilege which is enjoyed.
Now, we are now debating this measure if it will pass the test of Congress on whether or not our peers here will vote for the measure in the end, am I correct? And without this measure, many activities that be here, that are happening now are all covered by the Anti-Dami law, like certain industries right now, is it not?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, would you say activity in the definition of public utility, we are now allowing this activity and thus saying that they will not be punishable by the Anti-Dami law anymore?
Should, should the amendment be?
Should the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Pass? So for those who, who actually did not respect our laws, we are now rewarding them by passing this measure on redefining a public utility. For those who transgress our laws, violating the Anti-Dami law, but by not including them in the definition, we are now setting them free to do what they could not do, uh, before we pass this measure.
That would be one of the effect of the passage of this amendment.
Is that really the purpose of this law? Are we not going too far to embrace and, uh, protect many people who have violated our sovereign laws?
Mr. Speaker, should the good interpreter have any proposal onto which to hold those who, should this bill be passed, that, uh, hold those who have committed such before the passage of the bill, then we can, we can, uh, seriously consider your proposal, Mr. Speaker.
So what the good sponsor is saying is that what is prohibited directly may be allowed indirectly?
Mr. Speaker, we are upon passage of the current proposal. We are, we are liberalizing the industries, but it does not mean that we are see, we, we are condoning the actions of the, of, of.
But they will no longer be punished because we have given them a veil of protection by passing this measure.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that would be the effect.
So we really do not care if our country has been made stupid by many of these people who violated our law as long as we are able to attack foreign investment, whether, whether dirty money or clean money. It's not anymore of consequence to us.
Mr. Speaker, it is, it is still a consequence because we are, uh, we have laws in place and the Anti-Dami law is in place. That, uh, in fact, they should have been apprehended already, but that does, that should not, that should not preclude us from.
Then why do not, why, why, why don't we define telephony to be a public utility? Why are we consciously taking out telephony and data among the public utilities where the Filipino has to be protected? Why do we have to take it out of the definition?
Mr. Speaker, I, I, the, the intention here is not specifically for, for, uh.
Or transportation for that matter?
Uh.
Or highways?
Correct, Mr. Speaker.
Highway infrastructure? Why, why do we have to take them out of the definition? Why don't we just include all of those that were, are actually still serve, serving for the benefit of the Filipino people so that they can still have a mantle of pro-. We can still have a mantle of protection? Why do we have to just limit the definition to three activities when we all know when we wake up, we need water, okay? We have electricity, but how about data? How about telephony? How about the highways? How about the expressways?
Mr. Speaker, they, by the, by the way we have, uh, proposed as the, the.
How about railways? What happens now to the railways? What happens now to shipping? These activities which are reserved for Filipinos will now be open to foreigners. That is the intent of the good sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, the in, uh, the intention here is to clearly define what is public utility. Now, the consequence that, the obvious consequence of that is opening up all these industries, railways, air transport, land transport, to foreign investors. If we insist that we, that, that, uh, we need to protect the Filipinos by closing the doors, if, on this argument, if we, if we close the doors on, uh, on foreign investors on these industries, we are actually protecting the multi, uh, the, the, the big companies that are investing in these industries. We are not protecting the people that they are serving. Because right now, Mr. Speaker, we have not protected the Filipino people in terms of basic services.
What companies are you talking about? You say that we are protecting companies if we do not amend it?
Our telecommunications companies are the most expensive and they have bad service. The same way goes to transportation. Sea transport is still very expensive. In fact, it is thirty-eight percent of our agricultural products if you, uh, um, uh, at, at the current rate. Land transport, our railways, our MRT, LRT are still, I, I would not call.
Are, are these profitable activities? Sea transport and railway transport, are these profitable activities?
They, 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 they should be profitable, uh, activities, Mr. Speaker.
So are they being handled well by Filipinos or badly by Filipinos?
Today, Mr. Speaker, they are being, uh, operated by Filipinos because they have to follow the.
Are, are the, are the Filipinos doing a good job operating them or not?
No, Mr. Speaker.
The Filipinos are doing a bad job in their own country.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So in other words, when we put foreigners in, they will do a better job and love the Filipinos more than Filipinos?
Mr. Speaker, it is competition, not because of, uh, who loves who more. But is the competition, if it is healthy, then it will improve the services and improve the cost, Mr. Speaker.
In your proposed bill, I noticed that, uh, you also have a substitute bill prepared to replace the original bill which you have given to us. Is that not the plan?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, because, uh, we're considering the deliberations in the floor and all the proposals, we are still actually finishing up because of the, the, some proposals of the other members of Congress, Mr. Speaker.
And, uh, I have noticed that most of your work under the proposed bill refers to administrative agency on a fill-in-the-blanks manner. We will pass a law that does not actually point out the specific agency in charge of a specific activity.
I, uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, the.
Then this is not a complete bill?
The, the, one of the, I'm not sure if, what the version is already, but the administrative agency is in replacement of the word commission actually. Because previously, they only referred to commission. So, so we replaced that with administrative agency because that has actually been technically been removed already, the commission, the Philippine.
So you are proposing that we transfer.
The, uh, Mr. Speaker, it, it used to refer to Public Service Commission and now that has been replaced by the administrative agencies. And in the proposed, uh, amendment, we will list all the administrative agencies that are.
We are now actually putting, uh, a lot of our trust in these agencies and it is always our answer that these agencies will regulate the industries very well, is it not?
Yes, that's assumption, Mr. Speaker, and that's their mandate.
Well, uh, let's look at a similar, a simple example. The, what are, what is the agency in charge of frequencies? The NTC?
NTC.
Is it part of the?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
The NTC is one of the agencies. Has it ever acted in favor of the Filipino in town, in matters of telephony? Has it ever punished those who violated the rights of consumers?
Mr. Speaker, how, I am not, uh, completely familiar with how they have performed and I cannot judge in whether they have done it well or not, but, um, we have not in, uh, with, as far as the bill is concerned, we have not touched upon the, the, the authority of the administrative agency because this has already been in place. It's just the terminology of commission that we have changed, Mr. Speaker. Because, uh, commission does not exist anymore and it has been, I think, over the years been changed by law through various amendments. They replace na'tan ang administrative agency, technically, Mr. Speaker, so.
But anyway, you already made a remark earlier that Filipinos have not been very good at regulating all of these activities anyway.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, that, I, I don't want to, to agree in such sweeping statement. We, we also have to consider that we have a very fast-growing population and it is hard also, it's difficult also for our industries to catch up with the demand of our population. At the same time, uh, if you compare telecommunications, for example, in Indonesia, which is probably similar to our, uh, situation in population as well as topography, they have, I think they have like twenty operators in telecommunications. And in the Philippines, we have very limited number of, uh, of operators. We have, I think, three or four operators and that, that, uh, is not a healthy competition. We need more competition in order for them to improve their services. Should there be a need for foreign investors, then be it so if it will improve the services of the rest of the in this, uh, industry players. But, uh, um, that is one of the main considerations, Mr. Speaker.
Going back to the Anti-Dami law, you are now saying that, uh, any attempt to circumvent the Anti-Dami law may not be punished anymore because we are now allowing these activities to be controlled by foreigners?
How, how, Mr. Speaker, how the amendment is as is right now? Yes, that would be one of the consequence. But should the good, uh, honorable interpreter have a proposal in order to, for them not to get away with whatever they have done in the past, then we can gladly consider or.
Why don't we just include telephony and these activities which have been, uh, where circumvention has been a way of life to be among the definitions, among those defined as public utilities? Why take them out and reward the perpetrators of these crimes?
Uh, it, it is not, Mr. Speaker, it is not that we are simply taking it out because we want it to be open to foreign investors. But it is because we follow how we have defined public utility. Because public utility other than regularly transmits, distributes, uh, it is necessary for the life and occupation, occupation of the public. It is the, they are obligated to provide. It also has to be a natural monopoly, which are, which is a concept that has been introduced in various jurisprudence as well as Constitutional Commission as well as any definitions in other jurisprudence, Mr. Speaker. So based on all those criteria that I have mentioned, which is in the proposal, the telecommunications does not qualify as public utility.
So what we are doing here is we are choosing the activities where we will still have a mantle of, a bit of protection for the Filipino, but we will take away most of the protection to the Filipino.
Mr. Speaker, it is not about choosing which one, um, has, should have better protection or not. It is, it is which industries qualify based on the criteria we have set forth in the proposed amendments to the Public Service Act, Mr. Speaker.
But that is the consequence now that we are, will be allowing these things to happen that Filipinos will now have to bow down to the, to the money of. that Filipinos will now have to bow down to the, to the money of corporations of foreign origin who will now control our way of life on a daily basis, on our every movement, from the time we wake up to the time we sleep, we will now be controlled by foreign corporations, not just foreigners, but foreign corporations.
Mr. Speaker, it would be insulting to the Filipino investors as well as the Filipino public to say that entry of foreign investors will make us bow down to them. I believe in the strength of the Filipino public as well as the Filipino investors in, in, in performing well in any competitive environment in any industry.
So, the Filipino does not deserve to be protected anymore and should not have a protectionist policy as a way of life, as a strength in our constitution which was ratified by a majority of the Filipino people.
Again, Mr. Speaker, I did not state that the Filipinos do not deserve protection. In fact, they have need more consistently and ever since historically, they do deserve protection because it is our mandate and our obligation to protect the Filipino people.
So now we will allow the circumvention of our laws by ultimately passing this measure so that the constitution that we passed as a people in 1987 shall no longer have the effect of protecting the Filipino. Is that the result that is desired by this measure that we are trying to pass in this house?
Mr. Speaker, if we mean protecting the Filipino, protecting the bigger investors in these big industries, then that statement would be true, but otherwise, I would still continue to say that we need, the protection that we need to impose and to demand is the protection of the Filipino...
But why then do we have to rush it into this House of Representatives when what is really being addressed is a constitutional provision that should be tackled head-on and not circumvented by this act and making us all here as instruments of circumvention of the Philippine constitution? Why not just tackle it head-on and propose an amendment which we will put up to the Filipino people? We let the people vote on this measure. Why are we taking away from the people the right to vote on a measure that they themselves crafted by voting for it in 1987?
With the number of hours, Mr. Speaker, I've been defending this, I don't think this has been rushed. But I understand the point, Mr. Speaker. It is, but, but I still stand with what I have mentioned earlier, that we are not trying to circumvent the constitution, if we are trying to make a clear definition of public utility, not to favor any industry or disfavor any industry, it is to have a clear definition in order for the Supreme Court to be guided as well as for their legislative and the rest of our public to be guided, what is public utility and what should be protected with a constitutional limitation on equity and 64...
Mr. Speaker, it is the view of this representation that if we want to tackle this problem, let us tackle it by the horns. Let us not rely on a mechanism of using this house to circumvent the constitution. If we want to take away this activity from the power of the Filipino people, let us ask the people, the Filipino people, if they wish to let go of this protection that they sought by ratifying the constitution. So, it is, so by amending the constitution directly, it's the only way, Mr. Speaker, that we can be honest about the activity we are doing right now. That is the position I hold, Mr. Speaker, a position I hold dear to my heart. So, with that, I would like to thank the good, the good sponsor for her patience with my interpretation and I hope that this body has been enlightened by the real intent of the bill that we are trying to pass in this house. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Madam Sponsor.
Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 78 under Committee Report Number 5. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to greet the guests of the Honorable Juliet Uy. They are from the LGU Villanueva, Misa Misa Oriental, Mayor Jenny Rosali Uy, Ruel Gayoso, the Municipal Administrator, Jennifer Laguna, Secretary to the Mayor, Norma Enrique Castro, MDR RMO, Doctora Maribel Linog, the Municipal Health Officer, Lyuxin Orditor, DMS WDO, Eileen Habinyaw, DMD RMO staff, Kurt March Cabiluna, DMD C staff, Joy Takandong, MENRO staff, Amelia Blanke, MLG O, Rodney Gaid, Chief of the Police of the Villanueva LGU, Zethri Velonta, the Mayor's Office staff, Ramil Petagara, and Regina Tapos, the Mayor's Office staff.
The guests of the Honorable Uy are recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Also, Mr. Speaker, I would like to greet the guests of the Honorable Bong Teves. They are the founding fathers of the Taogama Fraternity and my fraternity as well. The founding father, Mr. Roy Ordinario, Mr. Rod Confesor, and the Honorable June Concepcion and Councilor of Pasig City, and the members of the fraternity.
Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measures on first reading as well as the resolutions and communications. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General will please read the title of the measures.
Additional Reference of Business, House Resolution 494. Resolution expressing the compassion, solidarity, support, and empathy of the House of Representatives for the displaced, bereaved, and injured Mindanaoans during the October 2019 earthquakes. Representative Kaitano Alampita Rumbal Disperdian Inabante.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 429, ah, 494, sorry, 494. And request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General will please read the measure of the, of the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 494. Resolution expressing the compassion, solidarity, support, and empathy of the House of Representatives for the displaced, bereaved, and injured Mindanaoans during the October 29 earthquakes.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 494.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. House Resolution Number 494 is hereby adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 490 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General will please read the title of the House Resolution.
House Resolution 490. Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Akelino Fementel Jr., former Senate President of the Republic of the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution in consolidation with House Resolutions Number 462, 467, 480, and 487. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. House Resolution Number 490 is hereby adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 493 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General will please read the title of House Resolution 493.
House Resolution 493. A resolution commending the Jesus is Lord Church worldwide on its 41st founding anniversary.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 493 in consolidation with House Resolutions Number 443, 452, and 456. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. House Resolution Number 493 as consolidated is hereby adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 410 under Committee Report Number 68 and request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General will please read the title of the measure.
House Resolution 410. Resolution honoring Philippine teachers on the occasion of the 2019 National Teachers' Month for their hard work and commitment in shaping the learners of all generations.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 410.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. House Resolution Number 410 is hereby adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move in an omnibus consideration, House Bill Number 861 and House Bill Number 5028. Both measures are under local bills. And request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of both measures.
The, is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General will please read the titles of the measures.
House Bill Number 861, an act creating a regular LTO district office in the municipality of Pomo Molok, South Cotobato, to be known as the LTO Licensing Center of Polo Molok and appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. House Bill Number 5028, an act declaring February 24 of every year a special non-working public holiday in the province of San Buanga Cibugay in commemoration of its founding anniversary to be known as Arang ng Cibugay.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the explanatory notes of the respective bills be made as the sponsorship speech.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wishes to interpret on this measure, I move that we close the period of interpolations on both measures.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of interpolation is terminated.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby terminated.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading, House Bill Number 861 under Committee Report Number 67 and House Bill Number 5028 under Committee Report Number 68. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. As many as are in favor of the measures, say aye. As many as are against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 861 and 5028 are hereby approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Sessions resumed. Mr. Speaker, the honorable members are advised that there will be a necrological services for the late Representative Rodolfo B. Albano Jr. of Department of LPGMA tomorrow, Thursday, November 7, 2019, and immediately thereafter, the 9:00 AM Reykjavik Mass at the Plenary Hall of the House of Representatives. May I advise the honorable members to be present for the mass and the necrological services for our late colleague? And with that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn in deference to our late colleague.
Mr. Speaker, excuse me. Mr. Speaker, may I be allowed? I'm here.
Yes, what is the pleasure of the gentleman?
I would like to request that I'll be able, that I will be allowed to deliver a very, very short personal and collective message for...
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Marco for, he wants to avail of the question of privilege, Mr. Speaker. What is the question of privilege available?
I just would like to clarify our position on the statement of Senator Laxon published in the Philippine Daily Inquirer yesterday.
The gentleman has 10 minutes.
Mr. Speaker, I stand on a matter of personal and collective privilege. I thank the House of Leadership and my honorable colleagues for allowing this representation to respond to the statements made by the Honorable Senator Ping Laxon as published in yesterday's issue of the Philippine Daily Inquirer. The Honorable Senator expressed his concern on the alleged 20 billion pork in the House approved 2020 budget. The Senator pointed to the 10.4 billion worth of projects in the Department of Public Works budget, further identifying the 507 million budget for the rehabilitation of Cannon Road as among those which were said to be suspicious. To allay misinterpretations that might cast doubt on my integrity as a person and as a legislator, I would like to state categorically before this August chamber and the Filipino people that the 507 million budget for the rehabilitation of Cannon Road does not cover the city of Baguio. This appropriation is included among those projects identified and listed under the DPWH National Capital Region Central Office as reflected in the NEP and the GAA bill for fiscal year 2020. In the spirit of transparency and accountability, this representation believes that every amount of appropriation should specifically indicate the description and scope of work for a certain project. I would like to reiterate that what is needed is to be done for the Cannon Road, a 33.53 kilometer stretch covering the barangays of Camps 1 to 6 in Tuba Benguet and barangays of Camps 7 and 8 in the city of Baguio, the total and complete rehabilitation to make it an all-weather road that would ensure any or endure any weather condition for the safety of all our residents and traveling along the stretch. This representation filed House Bill 1342 this 18th Congress for the purpose that would require a comprehensive and thorough technical study for its rehabilitation and preservation. To this end, I hope that all future appropriations for Cannon Road would meet its much-needed rehabilitation. Again, my sincerest thanks for this opportunity to clarify that Baguio City, the district I represent, is not included in the 507 million Cannon Road project. Again, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, my dear colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the speech of the Honorable Marco be referred to the Committee on Rules for Appropriate Action. So moved.
Any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, in due deference to our late colleague and to allow our members to visit the wake of our late colleague, with the indulgence of our members and also for the information of the members, the wake of our colleague Rodolfo Albano Jr. is in heritage, in Taguig. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until November 11 at 3:00 in the afternoon. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Chair hears none. Session is adjourned until November 11 at 3:00. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Session is adjourned until November eleven at three o'clock in the afternoon.